As well as how they use the five seeds. From the fifth grade class of Mr. Russell and we have Matthew. Matthew, tell us about your coding project.
Each small group in fifth grade was given two object cards from the game Disruptors. Our task was to use any number of elements from the objects to create a new invention. We also needed to build the invention with recyclable materials and program it with the Hummingbird robotics.
Matthew, how about you tell us about how citizenship was incorporated in your coding project?
We incorporated citizenship by being respectful to our group members, teachers, and helpers who came. We also practiced digital citizenship by being responsible when we were on our devices, researching, and programming.
From the fourth grade class of Dr. Breck, we have Nana Ya. Nana Ya, tell us about your coding project.
We worked in groups to design an adaptation for injured animal so it would be able to survive in its natural environment. After we made an animal with its adaptation from recyclable materials, we programmed it with a Hummingbird robot.
Tell us how critical thinking was involved in your coding project.
Critical thinking was involved in our coding project by researching our animal and really analyzing its need and coming up with its adaptation. But it didn't stop there. We needed to program the animal so it had lights and movement.
From the third grade class of Mrs. Battistoni, we have Celia. Celia, tell us about your coding project.
We worked in groups to program a Finch robot and bring a Franklin Regional Community member to life. We designed and programmed the robot to retell the community members' travels through the FR community.
Can you also tell us how collaboration was involved in your coding event?
We really needed to work together and listen to each other's ideas when designing our community members' vehicle, when designing the different buildings in our community, and when we were programming the robot to make the different stops.
From the second grade class of Ms. Colbert, we have Chris. Chris, tell us about your coding project.
We worked together to program the Dash robot to compete in a Winter Olympics event. We also designed the obstacle course for the robot.
Can you also tell us how communication was involved in your coding project?
Yes. We communicated with each other when we talked about the different blocks in our program we needed to use. We also communicated when we designed our map for our robot to travel on.
From the first grade class of Mrs. Rich, we have Connor and Luca. Connor, tell us about your coding project.
We worked together to program the Dash robot to run a course for a snowy day event. We also designed the course for the robot.
Luca, tell us how creativity was involved in your coding project.
Creativity was involved in our project when we programmed our Dash robot. It had to go forward and had to make turns. We also got to design our map to look like outside. We had snow, trees, and houses.
Finally, from the kindergarten class of Mrs. McCabe, we have Anthony. Anthony, tell us about your coding project.
We coded the Finch robot to go on a winter adventure using its five senses. We also got to design the cross for our robot.
What was your favorite part about the project that you did?
It's really just the rainbow and all of the mountains and fireplaces.
Well, folks, the children have spoken. It's clear that they practiced some very valuable skills during their coding events. Back to you, Logan and Thomas. Thank you, Kensington. What an awesome experience for the students. It seems as though they have all learned so much and had a blast doing so. Well, that concludes this special edition of our FRIS News. Thank you for joining us, and go Panthers!
You guys have anything else to say? Teachers? Students?
I've been playing this moment in my head the whole weekend of what I'm going to say. I can't take full responsibility for this. I can take some of it, but it really is everybody in the school that have helped. It was the cafeteria lady saving boxes for me so I could use. It was the custodians bringing them in to the Innovation Center for us to use. It was the teachers meeting me through their PLCs, talking to me about what they were doing in their classrooms. It was Mrs. Martz and Mrs. Sabrina as well, talking me through and we were figuring out, okay, what works best, what do you think would be the best for these boys and girls. Most importantly, the children have helped, and you can see the work that they have done. And I need to thank each and every one of you for putting the resources in my hands so I can make this possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you two ladies talk about your role? And Carmen, talk a little bit about your position and what you do in terms of collaboration for the integration of stream across into the general classroom.
So, I am the IT coach from K to 5. I work with the classroom teachers, like I said, going into their PLCs, listening to what they're doing, saying how we can change what we're doing in the classroom as far as like projects and how we can incorporate more technology in coding. I was very blessed last year to be a computer teacher in the district, so I saw what they were learning in K to 5. They're learning so much. They are learning a lot about coding, so for them, it's second nature. It's like another language, and they get it, and they get it very well. And then from that, I just work with the teachers and come up with lessons. They just come to me. And the coolest thing now is the teachers are coming to me and saying, "I want to do this. We can do it this way. What do you think about this?" So, it's really taken off, and it's now more in their hands, and I'm a facilitator.
So, really, you see a breakdown of two things. One, there is a stream special where our students go into a class where they may be learning about project lead, doing project lead the way, they may be studying computers. And there's a curriculum, K to 5, dealing with stream. But our goal is, if we only have a stream class, that's fantastic and it meets some of the objective. However, all of the objectives include the integration of stream education and hands-on, minds-on, real-world problem-solving across content areas beyond the stream special, but into an English Language Arts class, a social studies class, a math class, where kids are actively and meaningfully, minds-on, hands-on, engaged in their learning process. Hence, why we have the areas outside of those classrooms, as well as in each building having innovation centers adjacent to the stream classrooms. So, that way, our general classroom teachers have the space and the resources necessary to provide that type of learning. It requires additional space, additional planning, and additional resources, but based upon your investment, this community's investment in those spaces and those materials and these types of positions, that has made that type of learning viable for our students. I do want to take an opportunity to thank both of our teachers with us this evening, as well as their colleagues in the general education classroom, for their openness to grow, to learn, to drive themselves to get better each and every single day for their kids. And the transformation that I've seen in terms of the learning environment has been monumental and not something you see everywhere, every day. And so, that's only possible because of our staff, our families, our students, and your ongoing investment in the process.
I'd also like to thank the students for their presentation. You guys did a great job.
Addie, you're not getting off that easy.
I saw me hesitate. No, I just wanted to, first of all, speak on Carmen's behalf, too. I wish that we had more time for her to show you everything that she has done and put together, from a full website for the teachers in both primary and intermediate, to search for resources, a library of robotics resources that have tutorials and ideas for lessons. Teachers are able to sign out those resources, the robots, the various robots. They're able to see how many are available. Check them out. It is a true virtual library. It's amazing. But not only that, she has offered her time setting up through virtual meetings or in-person meetings for all of the teachers to be able to collaborate with her, to plan lessons centered around the math curriculum, science, social studies, ELA, as Dr. Pranay was saying, and it's truly amazing. So, nice job. And, you know, the news that you saw tonight, this is something in the intermediate school that we started at the beginning of the year. I'm pretty excited about it because this is an opportunity for all fifth grade students to be involved. It was a volunteer position, but most of the students, I would say about 85% of the students, signed up for this opportunity to be a part of the FRIS morning news crew. So, each week, a different news crew comes into my classroom to plan the news for the next week, for the following week. So, they're coming up with fun facts of the day, jokes of the day, whatever national, my goodness, there are so many national days out there. I had no idea that tomorrow was National Hippo Day. But just, you know, they're having so much fun with each other, planning the lunch menu, the birthdays, and being involved in that process from students who aren't comfortable presenting as anchors, as these eloquent students are, but from being the cameraman to the script writer. So, there have been students, you know, who I never thought would participate in this, who came into the classroom as the cameraman, who are now speaking and having fun as a news anchor. So, every morning, the whole school gets to see, and it's not an eight-minute clip, it's about a two-minute clip every morning, but they get to start their morning that way. Mystery Monday, we have two teachers who speak as guests, so the students get excited about that. But I'm just so excited to see where this leads and for the opportunity from all of you to have the equipment that we need for it and to make this possible. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's one of the things I really want to thank you guys and commend you for is, it's really nice. I love to hear the teachers come in and explain everything, but to see the students come in and work on a presentation and do it, and do it so well for a program, it just shows, and you've talked about collaboration and how you're working together to do different things. That's what I know myself and I know many others here up at the board, that's what we want to do. We want to see you engaging the kids, having them come up with fun ways to learn, where they don't even realize they're learning, but they're still becoming confident at this age, doing things well, doing a well presentation, explaining what they're learning, know why they're, you know, they'll know why they're learning it so much better. They will learn it, and they'll apply it better when they're explaining it to others. So, and the fact that, you know, from teachers to staff, different staff, working together for the resources and the why that everyone's in the building and doing those things to help with the learning process and across all the different, you know, different academic and subjects there, it's encouraging for me up here for the time that we put in to try to provide those resources to see that. So, thank you to you guys and to all the kids who put all the time in for that, so.
I'd like to add to that. It's really nice to see the smiling faces, first of all, of the kids, engaged, collaborating, working as a team. And you said something really important about the building blocks of understanding coding. What your children don't realize is, you might be looking at a potential career down a line. I know you can't understand it now because you're very young, but I saw a potential newscaster, okay, or broadcaster, but you're having a lot of fun doing that. And so, what you don't know is, right now, you're putting your own building blocks into, putting the time into, with the help of the teachers, and of course, the behind-the-scenes people that you probably didn't get a chance to mention, because there's a lot of them too. It's always, you get a lot done by a team. But I hope that the students get a lot out of that, to understand that by collaborating and working as a team, you accomplish a lot. And coding is very important because the world of computers and robotics is going to become bigger and bigger and bigger. And I'm going to speak a little bit objectively from my own son, who understood coding when he went to St. Vincent's College. And my son's got himself an $85,000 job because he knows how to code, so he's a lot more than just somebody else just filling in a position. So, pay attention to what you're doing, but most importantly, have fun. Thank you.
I want to just add one thing. Carmen and Addie did an activity with our new teacher induction group that we're running through, and as a professional development, they went through a coding process with them and did an activity just like they would do with the students. And it was so well-received by the teachers, and you guys did a great job organizing that. But it creates that professional development opportunity for them to be able to see what the students are doing, but then also to have that comfort level to repeat that with our own students. And you guys did a great job, all of you. So, in fact, I had actually seen this video before in a sneak preview, and I just had so much fun watching you guys watch yourself up there. That should have been another video in itself because you guys were excited to see that. So, you guys all did a great job. Thank you.
I actually had an opportunity to see it last week, and I was having a really rough day, and Mrs. Gillen sent it to me out of the blue, and she said, "You might want to see this." And I was in the middle of all kinds of different things, and I took a moment just to pull away, and I probably watched the first three minutes, and it made that rough day seem all worth it. And so, what you do every day in your class matters, and what your teachers do, it matters. And I want an opportunity for you to introduce yourselves to the board, and so, at least, give us your name and what grade you're in. I know we saw you in the video, but...
We'll have you stand up, too.
I'm Kensington Carswell. I'm in fifth grade, and I love dogs.
I'm Thomas, Thomas Zahn, and I'm in fifth grade, and I love sports.
My name is Logan Saint Amat, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Nana Franpon Manson, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Matthew Bender, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Luca Torres, and I'm in first grade.
My name is Carmen, and I'm in first grade.
My name is Anthony, and I'm writing.
Thank you to the parents for, and I see grandparents from the audience with them today, so thank you for bringing them and being part of this. And I'm going to also say that when this is done, you don't have to stick around for the whole meeting, obviously. As a dad of kids that range from fourth to...
Dr. Brown, I think that's a good idea because we don't want to steer them away from public service.
Good point.
And I'm sure we would if they had to sit here and listen to us. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much.
Gonna empty the room.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Just, I watched this go on here this evening and was thinking back to Mrs. Rensselaar's fifth grade math class at Murrayville School in 1946, and I'm thinking about it.
You're going way back.
How far we come. If I'd had this opportunity, I probably wouldn't have hated long division as much as I did.
They still hate long division.
Do they? Okay.
That's okay.
Okay, Dr. Brown, anything else?
Mr. Yangling, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to the rest of the agenda. I need approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of January 24, 2022, and a committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 7, 2022.
So moved.
Moved Ed.
Second.
Second Kevin. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did she say anything?
Diana? They're voting to approve the minutes.
I approve. Yes.
Okay, vote was nine zero. Future dates and upcoming topics, Dr. Pranay.
On February 23, the Technology Committee meeting will begin at 5:00 PM, and that's in the administrative offices, and that will be in Newlandsburg Elementary School because next week, we move into Newlandsburg as the new administrative offices. On February 25, we will have a Finance Committee meeting beginning at 1:30 PM in the administrative offices located in the former Newlandsburg Elementary School. On March 7, we will have the Committee of the Whole meeting beginning at 7:30 PM here in the Murrayville Municipal Building. On March 9, we will have a Policy Committee meeting beginning at 5:00 PM in the administrative offices, and on March 21, we will have our regular Board meeting at 7:30 PM here in the Murrayville Municipal Building. Upcoming topics include personnel, gifts, grants, and donations, budget transfers, the 2022-23 WIU General Operating Budget, and the Technology Budget. Mr. President, that concludes future dates and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Pranay. Okay, we're gonna move on to approval of the financial reports. Need a motion for the Treasurer's Report for January 2022. Need a motion.
So moved.
Moves Tracy.
Second Scott.
Second Scott. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Payment of bills. Paid bills, General Fund, $606,444.61. Capital Reserve Fund is $6,750. Athletic Fund, $4,638.34. Construction Fund, $105,145.77, for a total of paid bills of $722,978.72. Unpaid Bills, General Fund, $561,271.55. Technology Fund of $3,654. Capital Reserve Fund of $32,797.31. Athletic Fund, $11,575.11. Construction Fund of $499,386.52, for a total of unpaid bills of $1,108,684.49, for a grand total of $1,831,663.21. Food Service of $120,806.22, for a grand total, including food service, of $1,952,469.43. Need a motion for...
A move.
Mr. Bills.
Second.
Moved Bill. Second Ed. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Okay, we had no one here for public comments tonight. Solicitors' comments.
I have no comment for public sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor Amata. Okay, consented gen items. Remove the consented gen item for separate...
Mr. President, I request remove item 11 from the agenda, not because I'm opposed to it, but because I think it deserves a vote by itself and not get hidden in the consent items.
All right.
Second.
Move the second. Anybody else with the agenda items? I need a motion to approve consented gen items 1 through 10.
So moved. Bill Yant.
Second.
Second Ed. Prove Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Okay, Mr. Yant, you made a motion to vote on this separately?
I move that we accept the 2022-2023 capital plan and as it is written.
Accept it as it's written?
With the proviso that we get into it and dig as deep as we can to try and move items around and reduce costs so that we can put more money into education and kids than we do into buildings and tearing down buildings and that sort of thing.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second Ed. Motion made with Bill, second by Ed. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Mr. Kuzlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mederator?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Karimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Ms. Eshelman-Ramey?
No.
Mr. Yangling?
Yes.
Mr. Yant?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one. Okay, any comments for the good of the order? Hearing none. Need a motion for adjournment.
So moved to adjourn? Second.
Second Mark. Everybody have a great Valentine's Day. That's it. Thank you for coming.